Okay, we're gonna get started. Welcome to Lancaster City Council. Roll call. Brett?
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Man.
Present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris. We have a quorum.
I need a motion and second.
Move to excuse Mayor Paris.
Second that.
We have a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Invocation? John Metters? Welcome, John. Amen. Angela, you do the pledge first?
Of course. Please push right hand over your body aside with me. But with diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Angela. Raj, you wanna do the introduction? Raj, have him turn the mic around.
John, give me a minute. We have technical difficulties.
Like me to do that, too?
Try it now.
Okay. Is that coming through okay? All right. Once again, I wanna express my appreciation for both the opportunity to come here and to meet with you and to be introduced. And also, I'm very excited about the opportunity that I have to work at Antelope Valley Hospital. I've been in healthcare administration, hospital administration for over thirty years. Most of my career's been here in Southern California, but I've worked in other parts of the country. So it's kinda glad, I'm glad to be back here in Southern California. And I know it's a little cool for you guys, but I just moved here from Colorado. So this is almost like being on the beach in the summer. So if there's anything that I can do or our organization can do to help you both as a council, but in any patient care issues or just issues about where we're going as an organization, I look forward to working with you. And again, appreciate the opportunity to come here and meet you and be a part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, you have a presentation on homeowner's exemption?
I guess we're just proclaiming it homeless, or homeowner's exemption month. Jason, you wanna explain what that is?
Yes, we were visited by the assessors office wanting to get out the word about homeowner's exemption on your property taxes. The homeowner's exemption is a $7,000 reduction in your assessed valuation if you certify that you are, it is your primary residence. A lot of people don't know that it exists, but that opportunity exists. So they asked us that we present that information to the council and the community, encouraging them to apply for that if that does not exist on their current property tax.
Okay. Thank you. Is it on our website?
Yes, it's on our website.
Okay. Mr. Bozigan, any items to be removed?
No, sir.
Successor agency actions? Who's gonna do that? Pam? S A N B one?
Good evening, Vice Chairman Crist and Agency Directors. Before you, for your consideration as a resolution approving the recognized obligation payment schedule, also known as the ROPS, for the period July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, and directing staff to bring this item before the Lancaster Successor Agency Oversight Board. Health and Safety Code 34177 was recently changed to change the reporting period on the ROPS from a six-month reporting period to a one-year period. So it'll now cover the whole fiscal year. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Okay. Need a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number S A O one dash one-six.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Let's vote. It's unanimous. Pam, you're back up.
The second part of what's before you tonight are two budgets. They correspond to the ROPS period. The first budget covers the expenditures for the period July 1st through December 31st, 2016. And then the second budget covers the second half of the fiscal year, January 1st through June 30th, 2017. I'm happy to answer any questions on those schedules.
Any questions? I need a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt S A N B two.
Second that.
Let's vote. Passes unanimously. Minutes. Everyone have opportunity? Look over the minutes? I need a motion and a second for the minutes.
So moved as comprised.
Let's vote.
Wait a second.
We need to second it.
I thought she seconded it.
I'll second.
Motion passes unanimously. Consent calendar? We need to pull C C ten. C C thirteen. C C twelve. C C two. And C C eleven. Fran? Welcome. Did you have a good holiday? So so? Oh, sorry.
Thank you all and happy to everybody and I'm glad to be back. You haven't gotten rid of me yet.
We don't wanna get rid of you.
I, the only thing I had to say on this C C eleven is, what is it? Is that concerning that piece of property that's on 10th Street West in Lancaster, that little park?
Yes.
I call it a silly park 'cause it has no, no function whatsoever. All it costs is money to keep it up. Now, but I've never seen anybody use it. I've not seen a bike on it. I haven't seen a person sit on the bench on it. So that's my feeling. And that's why I was just questioning what that's all about.
That's exactly what it's about. That's what we're, we're doing.
Okay, so what do you, so what does this mean to me here?
It just means that, Mark, you wanna take it?
Yeah, the action is that the council awarded the contract. The contractor completed it. They went through the process making sure there were no liens by subcontractors. So now we accept the work and the contractor gets fully paid, the last bit of retention. The work's already done and the contractor deserves to get paid.
Okay, also, the, the, the flags need to be replaced. They're tattered.
We can certainly look at that and if that's the case, they'll be immediately replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Fran. And sorry to hear about your mom.
Oh, thank you.
Michael Reeves.
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. There's a few things on the consent calendar I'd like to speak about tonight. I spoke with the finance director. I was, I was noticed on the check register that we were paying the sheriff a million dollars. And I wondered if we paid the county by the month or do we pay them a lump sum for the services? And I've learned we, we pay them by the month. So that explains that. That's well and good. C C ten is about a public works construction thirteen dash zero one four. I have no objection to that. The only thing that bothers me on this is the colored bike lanes. You know the colored bike lanes over on Valley Central Way? You know, they, they really confuse you when you're making a right turn or whatever, trying to get on Valley Central Way. I wonder if, instead of colored lanes, we could just have the white lanes that we have throughout the city. C C thirteen is another one of these things where we change the contract after we made a contract. We've been through this before. It puzzles me that we sign a contract and somebody assigns it to someone else and then we end up paying more. You know, I would hope the city in the future would make people keep their contracts so we won't have to use our legal services to, to go over the contracts again. There's also in here about the construction on the interchange on the fourteen. Now, I've mentioned that before and it's gonna be on J eight and the 20th Street West. It's imperative, it's imperative. You know, I hope somebody thinks about this. It's imperative that we have a off-ramp going to A V Hospital. We already have an on-ramp on J eight to get to the fourteen. We need desperately to put that off-ramp because when they build that medical center, people are gonna take the freeway. They don't wanna get off on K and then go all the way around in a circle to get to the hospital. If it's possible, let's have an exit and an entrance over there by the hospital.
Michael, you're, have you looked at our medical main street?
Pardon me?
Have you looked at the medical main street? How we're changing the streets in those areas?
No, I haven't.
Those will address those issues. So those will be-
Good, that's very good.
Better access to the hospital and the hospital areas, from those areas. Okay, I need a motion and a second for the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to, to accept the consent calendar as comprised.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. It's unanimous and I'm gonna turn the meeting back over to Mayor Paris.
So where are we at?
We're on N B one.
Any speaker cards?
We have two.
We have two speaker cards on used mattress recycling?
Yes.
Oh, Michael Reeves. Fran, what are you doing up here? I gotta hear this.
I'm sorry, I'm not politically correct by addressing Chris, Vice Mayor, and my, my talk earlier. Now I'll say, I, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Fran Sarasaras and I'm glad to be back. On this mattress situation, it's kind of a stinky situation. How is that gonna work recycling mattresses? And where are you gonna get them from?
I'm not gonna sleep on one, I'll tell you that much.
So, I know, it's, it sounds kinda silly. It was silly to me, too. And I said, well, I don't know if I should bring this up 'cause people think I'm kind of ignorant. But I'm not ignorant because I was wondering what the heck is recycling mattresses for?
Let me have somebody from staff tell us about that.
Brian Ludiki will be giving that presentation, sir.
I jumped the gun, Fran, I'm sorry.
That's all right, come on.
I was just so shocked to see your name on the- Really, Brian? Really?
Really, really what?
Of all the things we could be doing?
Actually, I, I think this is a great service that we'll be providing to our community. No, the city will not be recycling used mattresses. That's not our role in all of this. However, as a result of a program that was developed by the Mattress Recycling Council, private industry, under the requirements of legislation that was passed by the state of California in 2013, the city will be able to get reimbursed for its time and its costs in terms of picking up mattresses or collecting mattresses. Currently, if our residents want to dispose of a mattress, they basically are responsible for taking it to the landfill and, and having that entirely in their hands. However, now with this particular program, they will be able to take it to the city's recycling center, either Box Spring or a mattress. The city will, in fact, collect those. And if need be, in fact, we've already planned for the ability, if someone needs one picked up, we can do that also. And the cost for that, the city will get a certain amount of money back for each mattress that it collects. And any of our staff time that is devoted directly to this, including mattresses that can't be taken into the program by the state or costs that we would incur taking into the landfill, will be reimbursed for. So it's really a great opportunity. It's a new service to our, to our residents. And we think that it will eliminate some of the dumping that we see happening of these items out in the desert. And in fact, you know, we have the ability now to pick these up and get reimbursed for our costs on that also. So I think it's a very positive program in many ways.
Thank you.
Staff's recommending that you adopt the resolution to allow that to occur.
Good enough, Fran? Fran, come up to the podium, please.
If the city's gonna get reimbursed for, and I know there's costs involved as far as labor and mechanical trucks and so forth and so on. And if, and is, and if there is gonna be any profits left, which I kinda doubt, but I wanna bring it out anyway. If there's gonna be any profits left after all this, who's gonna get the money and where's it gonna go?
Marvin takes that money.
Oh, he does? So then we can go to coffee after all, right?
Just goes in the general fund, right?
General fund?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reeves.
Well, just in case. I just had to clarify for the public.
Did you purchase a mattress, Mr. Reeves?
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. Two times this month, I've had public works come out to 12th Street West between J eleven and J nine to pick up mattresses and furniture. Now, I'm not sure these people who dumped their mattresses on 12th Street West or over there in the grounds by A V Hospital are gonna go over to Avenue H and dump them off. So my question is, is it possible for us to have a truck and get compensated for picking these mattresses up if we have to go to different locations like 12th Street West or over there by A V Hospital? And by the way, how many mattresses are picked up now? And I would like to know how we were doing it now because they're all over town.
Well, but before I answer that, you're, you're not the guy that took the couch off my front lawn, are you?
Anyway, that was the comment. I, and what I'm confused about it.
What's your couch doing on the front lawn?
Are we gonna get like-
That's what you do with an old couch, isn't it? You put it out on the front lawn?
Amount of money for each mattress that we pick up. Are we gonna get like three dollars a mattress?
You know, that's an idea. I mean, is there the, is the funding there to, you know, like, you know how people go out and pick up tin cans? You know, can they go out and pick up mattresses and stuff? And we pay them for it?
I'd have to look into that. I don't know. I would, I would, I'm having both ears the same message. The grant wouldn't pay for that. We could look if there's a program for that. We have, probably not, but we'd certainly look at it.
I just wondered if we could have the grant do it.
Okay, well, thank you.
I want my couch back. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution Number one six dash zero two.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous? Okay, council agenda, item one. I'm nominating Angela Underwood Jacobs to the, to be our audit representative, to represent the city council in communication with auditors.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Let's vote. You don't like yourself? You better learn. Let me tell you something. When I was in the eighth grade and ran for classroom rep, I thought you couldn't vote for yourself either. And I lost by one vote.
In that case.
Sorry. One abstention. Four yes. C A two?
Stained by Underwood Jacobs.
What?
We have to state who the abstent, abstaining party was, so I was stating it for her.
To further improve her, to further embarrass you.
Who has a real self-confidence problem. Well, what else could it be? Let's vote. Does she have, no, never mind. All right. Maria She is, is a, is a woman who I was with in China, in Shanghai, last month, who set up all of the, the meetings and has formed some great relationships between the city and Chinese companies. And she would certainly be better able to perform this function if we made her an official representative of the city of Lancaster. And for that reason, I'm appointing her as that official representative. Any questions?
I'll second that.
I don't think I need a vote. Do I?
To give her official status, it would be appropriate to have a vote.
Okay, so you second. All right. Any discussion? Let's vote. Maria's our new representative. Have you guys met Maria?
I have.
You guys need to, she's doing an amazing job. I mean, I can, there's a very good possibility we'll have three, three new companies by the end of the year. Wouldn't you say that was accurate, Mark?
I would say absolutely. We have one that's, we're working with right now and a second one we'll be meeting with in two weeks. So two are very, very real.
Okay, good. Oh, and city attorney, what about my idea for the ordinance keeping terrorists from being entombed in the city of Lancaster so we don't have a debacle like the city of Rosemont recently had?
Yes, that is absolutely, that's something that can be done if that's the direction of the council and we can bring that back at the next meeting.
Any discussion? Any out-
Yeah, do we have the authority? How, how do we have that authority?
Section eight one one five of the California Health and Safety Code provides that the governing body of a city in the exercise of its police power may prescribe standards for governing burial, inurnment, entombment, and maintenance of cemeteries, including mausoleums and columbariums.
So if we designate an individual a terrorist, then we can bar them from-
We would not be the one designating. I would recommend that the ordinance be written such that if the federal government were to designate someone as a terrorist or they were, I would also recommend that we include in that designation persons convicted of capital crimes, such that we have, my understanding is the, the goal is to avoid having locations to which people may come and either desecrate or venerate.
No, it's okay if they desecrate them.
Well, we wouldn't want them to desecrate adjacent plots.
That's true.
So, or present some sort of public health or safety threat. So under section eight one one five of the Health and Safety Code, we do have that power.
Thank you. David Paul?
Am I directed to bring it back?
Well, we got-
Oh, we've got speakers, sorry.
Oh, you're running against me, aren't you?
Vice Mayor and Council. Good evening, yes, sir, I am.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I am. And I'm a little puzzled as to why you give me some more ammunition. You know, the Department of Consumer Affairs regulates cemeteries. I have it on good authority. And there's no way to prevent someone from being interned. A cemetery cannot even prevent someone from being interned in a plot if they have paid for it in advance. So that's who we're up against. But the other thing is the symbolic nature, and I know what you're going for, but where do we draw the line? If someone is a rapist, if someone is a gangbanger, if someone is a cartel member and they have done heinous things, wouldn't we exclude them from being buried? I mean, no one likes terrorists, but it depends on how you pose the question. I don't want terrorists buried here, but people, I guarantee you, these people are dead and they're not gonna cause any more problem and they're in the ground and you're elevating this discussion puts more sensationalism on them than if it'd just been left alone. And there's really nothing we can do. So I ask for reason here. Let's be, a lot of you hold certain values and, and let's be decent to the dead. Let's let the dead be dead and be done with them. That's the best way to do this. Thank you, sir.
So I take it you're of the belief that a, a dead terrorist is a good terrorist, right? You know, I, I, I don't think it's a, it's a small thing. I, I think that here you have these people in another city who are just the lowest, I mean, they're, they shut down, I don't know how many people for no other reason than they had a different religion than theirs. There, there is no one more despicable than these people. And then we find that somebody in the Antelope Valley gives them a funeral. I mean, the, any honoring of these people at all is reprehensible. The, when McVeigh was executed, the Congress kept him from being buried in a, in a veterans cemetery. So there is, is precedent for it. Trust me, if it was up to me, I'd bulldoze their families' homes, just like they do in Israel. There, there shouldn't be any, any honoring of these people whatsoever. And I'm the mayor, so I get to ask the council to approve an ordinance. So I have. Mr. Reeves.
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. You know, what disturbs me about this discussion is that we're dealing with some people who are very fanatical in their beliefs. And I'm concerned that, I know we're upset and I'm upset about everything it-
Wait a minute, I'm not upset.
But we have military personnel that use our facility and live in our city. I don't wanna expose them to a possible retaliation by terrorists. You know, there's a large contingent of people who live in San Bernardino of Middle Eastern extraction. Extraction. All they have to do is get on the 15, to the 58, to 14, and they're here, two and a half hours. And I would, we've all vented, we're upset, but I would just let this go. And if you want to be specific about it, some people say the Confederacy was a terrorist group. We have a Confederate soldier buried in Lancaster Cemetery. Are we going to dig him up and bury him someplace else? In more, we've always respected each other's dead. You know, we try to kill each other, but after it's over, we let the enemy get their dead, and we get our dead. So I'm very concerned about this. Because when I go in a public building in Lancaster or anyplace, I'm looking around for an exit. I'm waiting for the bad guys to come in here, and I don't want to encourage them. And I know Mayor Perez, you have great intentions on this, but I fear for our city, and I said, let's just, let's just forget it and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. So do I need a motion?
You do not. This is only on for direction, so I simply need direction.
Make us an ordinance, would you?
Okay.
Thank you. And if we could do the thing about the terrorists' family homes? Probably not.
I'm going to say that probably not.
Probably not.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Council reports. Report on the activities from the Board of Directors of District 14 County Sanitation. Did you get that billion dollars for us yet?
No, but Mayor Perez, I did give the update at the last meeting, so I was moving quickly. We actually took the meeting out of a rotational schedule, and we held it early, so.
So we're gonna move on?
Yes.
Okay, any council reports? No action on the housing authority, no action on the financing authority, no action on the power authority. City manager?
Yes, as we begin 2016, look forward to a very good year. We have a couple of closeout items and things to look forward to, so I have, believe it or not, four short videos. We're gonna show Magical Boulevard Christmas. Then we're gonna show, what the public may not realize is we have a partners program. And the partners program, some of the local businesses help us with our events, Outlook Magazine, et cetera. But there's also a benefit to the partners of networking, so you'll see a short video on that. And then we put together, we had a press conference today on the Blue Angels coming for the Los Angeles County Air Show. And finally, Councilmember Mann represented us at a YOLO press conference. We have a picture of that, and maybe Councilmember Mann can say a couple of words. So let's start with the Magical Boulevard Christmas video.
It's mid-December, and downtown Lancaster has been once again transformed into a glistening winter wonderland for the city of Lancaster's sixth annual Magical Boulevard Christmas.
You know, this is a great time for us to stop and reflect and counter blessings. I am so thankful for what we have, and, you know, we hope that everybody has a great Christmas and a happy new year.
Do you think that the events down here in Lancaster, do you think that is a time to create memories with families?
This is probably one of the greatest events, to bring the entire family out, mom, dad, the kids. So this ends up being a great Saturday evening to think about Christmas.
At being here at Magical Boulevard Christmas, I see a lot of people with the families and kids, and they love it. And I know if my kids, like, they get excited about it, I'm sure all the kids feel the same way. And we're all happy, we are shopping, we're eating, we're enjoying, so I love it.
What do you think the ambiance is tonight? How do you describe it?
You know, there's families, families and more families here. In fact, I had my entire family here this evening, and my daughter was able to actually turn the light on to, like, the Christmas tree, so that was pretty amazing. So this is gonna be one of those kind of Christmases nice for us that goes down in history.
It's a great event. You know, we were here when we were kids. We didn't have anything to do when we were kids. But when you look down the Boulevard, there's thousands of people here, they're enjoying Christmas, and it's just a fun time. And the city of Lancaster puts all these events on. Our Parks and Rec staff, and our entire staff at City Hall is just great for the giving. Our community's a great community, and, you know, we're really striving to make it better.
Do you feel this event brings the community together?
Well, you know, I think that these events have that effect, where pretty soon you start feeling that community feeling, that this is our community, this is our Christmas, this is our event. You know, there's probably 30,000 people down there, and they look forward to it. And, you know, it's great, it's free, you know? It's not a commercial thing, it's just a time for people to come together as a community and start the Christmas season. And I think it's a fitting way to do it.
Anything else you would like to share tonight?
Merry Christmas.
Okay. Oh, there's more. Oh, good. Was that a sarcastic "oh, good" or a? No, it was "oh, good." Next one is the value of our partners program. And Rhonda, how many partners do we have now?
We're up to 20 currently.
It's 20 businesses help us put on events in Outlook, and they do a great job, and they give back to the community.
Today, we're celebrating the newest partnership and the newest, really synchronization of these partners working together, and it's between Prints for Life and Sierra Toyota. Jim Hawes, Skip Hansen, Dante Simi, they're all sort of working together. Six months ago, they didn't know each other, and now they're working together regularly on different business opportunities.
The city actually sponsored a lunch here, and I came over for the luncheon and took a tour, and I was totally blown away with what they do here.
So tell me what you thought. You took the tour that day and?
I was just excited about everything that they have here. I found out then that they did printing, all kinds of printing, clothing, silk screening, embroidering, and that sort of stuff. And so I had an opportunity to have some shirts made for an organization that I'm involved with. So when I came in, I saw what else they did, and one thing led to another and another. So now we're doing our business cards, we're doing clothing, and it's just blossomed into an absolutely wonderful relationship. I keep telling everybody that these are my new best friends here in Lancaster, and they are.
Sierra Toyota, one of our premier partners in the city of Lancaster, has stepped up after seeing our amazing facility here doing great things for kids. And after a meeting that they had here, I think it was about four or five months ago, he said, you know what, you guys are doing such amazing things for kids, we want to give back. We want to make sure that everything that we do with our printing needs comes through your organization and allows your kids to get a chance to give back to Sierra Toyota and learn some skills, and hopefully someday hire these kids. Because Jim is such a big fan of what we do, and he's certainly one of these guys that gives back to the community, he found out we're, at the end of our year, our organization has a lot of leftover inventory that we would normally just have to throw away. It's a loss. And when he heard about it, he said, hey, you know what, let us buy Euro access inventory, and we can donate it to charity, but it'll allow you to get some dollars to start investing in some new product and some new equipment that our kids can actually give back. And what a generous thing to do, because he didn't have to do this, he did it out of his own heart. It's fantastic. And what he's doing for kids, just, it continually amazes me how our partners continue to give back.
What this program does is it puts our businesses together to meet and greet with one another, learn each other's fortes, how they might be able to work together and create their own partnerships, so that we grow this exponentially throughout the community. So it's not just the city of Lancaster working with 20 now individual businesses, it's the city of Lancaster and all those businesses working together.
Thank goodness for the city of Lancaster, our mayor, that actually put this whole coalition together. The coalition has gotten to be such a supportive group, and it's really changing the infrastructure of our city. It's making it more of a collaborative environment. Where kids, the community, our political leaders are all involved, and really gets to understand what's happening in politics, especially in a little, small city, which I don't think it's little anymore, but certainly a powerful one like the Antelope Valley in Lancaster, California.
Really, truly, what I really like about this is it's helping them help kids, which is what we need. We need to do more for the kids in the community and help develop this type of thing. And really, truly, it's a win-win-win all the way around.
Thank you for that. Next, we have a very short 45-second preview of the air show. Marvin and Ken and Raj were able to go to that press conference today. And Marv, I don't know if you want to say anything about that?
It was just, it's, it's one of those things I learned today that, this is the third year, but as a third year, the economic involvement with the city is $17 million. So I learned that today, and it's just huge. And the partnership with the county, with everything that makes this happen, all the different partners that the city has with it, the economic impact of the air show is just tremendous. Not to say thanks to the troops, I mean, there's all that that's in there, but to have the community come together, to put this together, to be able to support it in three years, to have the Blue Angels, to have the Thunderbirds, to have all those different organizations that come together to make this happen is just tremendous. So it was a great, great thing and a great opportunity today. Raj?
You know, I attended all those last two, and I took my kids, and every time, it's, they enjoyed it, I enjoy it. But overall, like Marvin said, economically, having a small business, I think, affects our restaurants and hotels and everything. So overall, it's just an amazing thing in our town. So I love it. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Three years ago, we were hoping it was gonna work. Now we know it works. This is just so successful for our community. It shows the success of the Antelope Valley. Most of all, it shows the commitment of all the citizens. This is just not a Lancaster event, this is an Antelope Valley event.
This is just an amazing thing to do, you know, for the community, for the country. It's very inspiring, and it's the best thing to do for our next generations.
I was flying one of those. In your flight sunglasses, I see.
That's as close as Marvin got, was wearing Ray-Bans today, so. And then finally, Ken, I don't know if you wanted to say anything briefly about the press conference that you attended today on YOLO?
Yes. Obviously, I represented the mayor and the city council, and this was our first annual awards. You can see there, we, that's Anna Perfecto Stone. She was the award winner of our $5,000 grand prize. And in order for her to be able to get that, they actually kept point score of all the different activities, whether it was being required to go see the doctor, working out, losing weight, whatever it may be. And obviously, she was the individual that won overall. There was four categories. Maybe I better not, I gotta be careful about what I say, because I might offend a couple of the city council members, but the categories were?
Oh, did you, did you hear that?
Yeah, yeah.
You should have heard what he said before the meeting started.
Yeah, oh, yeah. But, so let me tell you what the categories were.
You are running for office.
I know, I know.
Okay.
But the four categories were healthy lifestyle in relationship to eating and nutrition. So that was pretty interesting. And again, there's a tiered system of points that are given to determine who's the overall winner. There was one for weight loss, and that was very interesting. The third one was?
The skinny guys always say stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah. I took liberty of that.
They pause when they say it, too. Yeah, they do, yeah.
Took liberty of that, so I thought maybe that was the reason why I was selected to represent the city council. I don't know, just saying. But the other one was avoiding fast food restaurants. That was pretty interesting, about being conscious about the calories and your intake on a daily basis. And I'm trying to think. Help me out. There was one other category, Jason.
Fitness.
Was it fitness? Yeah, school, yeah, just working out. Because there was a couple, the very first individual came up, it looked like he spent a lot of time in the gym.
So which one of these did Marvin win?
The excellence. We sent Ken, because he just got back from Ethiopia.
Anyway, I had to take my opportunity. I saw a chance, so I thought I'd take it. But anyway, ultimately, this is about making Lancaster people conscious, citizens conscious, because even, it was almost like Anna Perfecto Stone, she got up and spoke, and she talked about all the things that has occurred over the last year and how it's changed her outlook about life. And I think, as the mayor has said historically, I think when we have a healthy city, I think it becomes a vibrant city, and I think it's a key or a cornerstone. And I mentioned that today, that was my leadoff. And I want to thank you, Mayor, for, because I know that, you know, two or three years back, you were the one that was leading the charge in relationship. We need to get this going, so thanks for challenging, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, is that it? City clerk?
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendaised matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Zachary Carlson?
Evening. I'm kind of here on, well, merit badge hiatus. I'm worried that with minimum wage jobs, there aren't enough for 16 through 18-year-olds. Minimum wage jobs were originally created for those 16 through 18-year-olds as they're working their way through high school. But as it stands, there is more and more 35 and up holding those jobs, and really, my worry is that later on generations, high schoolers won't be able to have those jobs. And with less trade classes like auto shop, electrician, plumbing, woodwork, they won't be able to get those jobs either unless they focus on those outside of school with AP classes and whatnot. There won't be enough well-paying jobs to support those students for whatever they want, for college, getting their bachelor's degree, moving on to UCLA. And really, that's my concern with this. This is probably something for the economics development department, which I don't think is still in at this point, but?
No, we're still there.
Okay. But, excellent. But that's my worry, is that without trade, without trade classes in schools, that students won't be able to get those jobs that they want to succeed. With plumbing, you'll always need a toilet, that's why plumbers make so much money. With electricians, right now, we're in a booming session of electricity. But with minimum wage jobs being held by 35 and up, with 35 years and up, those entry-level jobs aren't available for those entry-level workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Wally Melendez. He's running against you, too.
Good evening, city council staff, people of Lancaster. It occurs to me every time that I come to the city council meeting that there is insufficient government representation of the city. My deduction on this is that a lot of the people in this group right here in front?
Wally, can you step forward and talk into the mic so they can hear you at home? Thank you.
I'm guessing, and thank you for interrupting me, I'm guessing that a lot of the people in here, not to get personal or to point fingers. in here, not to get personal or to point fingers, come from, from, from the southwest corner of the city. And it seems to me that there's hardly any representation, for example, from the eastern part of the city, east of Division Street, up J Avenue, north and south, and even south or rather northeast, I, I Avenue, in the area of 10th Street West. I hardly, I hardly sense that there's any representation from those areas. And as I've mentioned before on this meeting, the reason for that, most probably, is because there is no district voting. As I understand it, the city council, the city council members are also at large, elected at large, just like the mayor. Well, that is wrong. That defies the U.S. Constitution. So I say we have to change that soon, very soon. So with all due respect, I, I realize that, that people don't understand that, maybe because they've, they've been, maybe they were born with a silver spoon in their mouth. I don't know, but that has to change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to respond to that.
What, the Spoon Park?
Yeah, the Silver Spoon. I don't think anyone up in this diocese has a silver spoon in their mouth, but the city has fought diligently throughout the last two or three years to represent the east side for individual things like the power plant, where if all the paving that's going on, different things in the city is doing, it's happening on the east side. The majority of our law enforcement is targeted on the east side. We're representing the east side in all the different districts tremendously. So this council represents the entire city, not just individuals in their local district. No, you had your chance.
A little harsh, aren't you? Shannon McDonald? That could be your next mayor.
Yes, I missed you all.
Hi, Shannon, how are you?
I'm fine. I'm Shannon McDonald, in case you guys, some of you don't know me. I have an associate's degree in criminal justice sociology, my, my bachelor's in sociology, master's in public administration, and I just was on the ballot for Lancaster School District, the board. So I didn't win, I knew I wasn't going to win, but, you know.
So how'd you do it?
I gotta have something added. Well, I, I maintained like eight or nine percent of the vote without campaigning, because I was like, okay, I'm the only woman on the ballot, that's cool, okay. My first time running, so I was okay.
So they were in districts?
I'm trying to figure out how to get the paperwork to be, for the assemblyman, I mean, a woman and all that stuff. That's what I want to know.
I'm sorry, what?
The assemblywoman. Okay, I, I came for this. Let me talk about this real quick.
I'll start your time again.
Okay. I want to be, I want to run for Assembly or Congress, Senate. That's what I'm looking to do. So anyways, I just thought I'd put that out there. I was at home because I was bored, and so I decided to look at the California legislative, legislation. And I was very, very alarmed when I saw that Assemblymember Rodriguez decided to enact Assembly Bill 58 and the school safety plans. It's not the bill itself that's bothering me, it's the, it's the wording, it's the language in the bill that, that bothers me. And one of the key...
That's always the rub.
Well, you know, me having a, a degree in public policy, that's what it does, that's what I do, you know what I mean? That's what I, I, I like the public policy, I like to write the laws and things like that. That's what I, that's what my fascination is. Is the tactical response is the problem that I'm having with the K through 12 schools. And the, and the research that I've done since last Saturday on this issue, that actually, it involves everyone. I, I took it to the school board, but I realized that it involves the mayor, it involves the sheriff's department, it involves everyone, to come up with a, a thing for these active shooter drills, which I was horrified when I saw them. I saw a few of them, I wouldn't have came here, I had to see them before I came here. And it was disturbing. And I have four children getting ready to be total in the school district, and I'm not, that doesn't sit well with me, to have these, these drills. I know that this is something that needs to be discussed further, but I, from what I do see, that this, there has to be a decision made by October 2016. So I'm like, I've come at, I've come at the council, and I've said stuff about my sheriff's department that I love very much, make sure we're clear on that, about community policing, the social workers knocking on parents' doors, more parental accountability, there's so many different ways, but this one kind of, to me, jumps the gun. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm not happy about this, and some, I probably will end up, this is my motivation to go to Sacramento. This is my motivation to take a drive up there in my suburban and take and deal with this, and talk to them about this, too. So I just wanted to let you know that I definitely want to be kept up a little bit, if possible, on what's going on with this, since my children's, my children are in school right now, and this is something that I'm not okay with them participating in. And because I'm, I know I'm educated enough to, to school my own children, but I really didn't want to take the social aspect away from them. But I can, you know, if this doesn't get addressed properly to where I'm satisfied, where my children don't have to live in fear, basically. So that's really all I wanted to say, okay?
Got you, boy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt Boyer?
Good to see you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, staff. I put myself in for two different subjects, so I'll hit the first one. Once again, I, I cannot say enough the fantastic job you folks did over the holidays. We saw it on the video, it was very, very impressive, and I enjoyed it immensely. There is, and I'll get this one out quickly in case I only get the remaining two minutes, there's still a difficulty along the Boulevard with the skateboarders. Just the other night, I had watched a child almost get run over by children, 16, 17, 18-year-old children riding on their skateboards. And because they all gather at the store where all this equipment is sold, I thought I might poke my head in there and ask, are you aware that there is a law against them doing this? I was called every name under the sun. I was literally almost thrown out the door, because their opinion is they don't care if it's against the law. Now, I've seen this happen over and over again. I live immediately behind Beck, so I'm on the Boulevard at all times. I work with the homeless and the addicted and the mentally ill, and so that keeps me out there quite a bit. I can understand why they should be allowed to, to ride their boards when they're out in areas that don't have a lot of foot traffic. But we know how that traffic downtown works. You have those intermediary places where you have to make your left turn or your right turn, you have to stop, and you've got to watch traffic this way and that way. And in all honesty, I, I make certain eye look in three or four different directions when I walk across the street. But when I have to take into account that this, this law is not being enforced, it concerns me. I'm a relatively large man, but I literally almost saw a, a child run over, and that's what brought me to take this action about going in and talk to the store manager. They were taking photos of me. I imagine I'm showing up on Photoshop as the, the old man that doesn't like skateboards, or I'm in Facebook, or...
They might, they might have a point.
But that's true. It's quite true. That's quite true. I, if I'm allowed to speak additional time this evening, that's great, otherwise I can come back, but I need more than 20 seconds to talk about the other subject matter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Happy New Year. Yeah, I needed to come here tonight to talk about an incident that happened to me on January 3rd. I rode the bus from Palmdale to Lancaster to come home with three bags of groceries. I caught the 4 o'clock bus. I thought I'd have time to come home. I caught the, the 11 o'clock bus, I mean, the, I caught the 6 o'clock bus, number 12, going east. At 6:31, I'm sitting on the bus, they made an announcement that this is the last bus running, and I was literally thrown out on the street at 20th and J East, near the Bank of America.
Where were you going?
Home. I had three miles.
Where was your bus stop to get home?
Three miles from there.
Did you tell them that?
Yes. I heard the announcement come over at 6:31. The dispatcher said Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, we're stopping the buses now at 6:31. At 6:45, I was left out on the street. Right now, I have no cell phone. I was able to stop someone to use their phone, the taxis never arrived. I was out there for an hour, and the nice bus driver, he came by in his own private car, because he could see I was standing there still, and he gave me a ride home. He says this happens every Saturday and Sunday, they shut the buses off an hour or two hours early, depending on their mood. You can look at the schedule. When they made that announcement, those buses run till 8 o'clock. I don't know how many other seniors are dumped on the street. Is this the way you treat seniors? You want us dead?
What day was...
You know this new country.
It's Sunday. Do you know the date? What was the date?
I said January 3rd.
I know, but I can't hold that much information.
Sunday, right after New Year's Eve.
Pull the, don't we have videotapes on those buses?
I don't know if we have video. I think we have on most, I don't know if... We will, we will look into it, and I'll make sure that it doesn't happen again. That's unacceptable, and that's, that's, that's not right. You're, you're absolutely 100% correct. It's, it's unacceptable, and it, I guarantee you, it will not happen again.
Thank you. And Jeff Jupiter was the bus driver. He was so worried about me, because he had to enforce the law. But an hour later, he came back, and he saw me standing there still, and he gave me a ride home, so thank God for him. He's a wonderful employee. But he says this happens every weekend. They just try to save money. So this is really a threat, so I appreciate your interest.
We'll fix it.
Thank you. I don't know how long it's been going. I'll have to check it.
This is the first that I've heard of it, it's as...
Something tells me Marvin's going to know the answer to that tomorrow.
Hey, thank you. I appreciate this city, and I love our buses and everything, so...
Thank you, and I apologize on behalf of AVTA and the city of Lancaster. It, it will not happen again.
No, thank you. I appreciate this city. I've been here since the 40s, so I've seen this place really change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I have to agree with Wally. I do believe that Lancaster should be in districts in the east side. No disrespect, Marvin, but the mayor of Palmdale and the council members said the same thing you did.
About?
About their, about you represent the east side, and that's what they said when they all lived on the west side, too, so...
Well, Jason, I did 42 meetings with staff in the city of Lancaster that represented the east side.
I know, but the thing is, until you walk into a man shoe, you don't know what they feel. Unless you live in an area, you don't know how their streets are, and I just think there should be an advisory vote on the ballot in March that asks the residents, because it's a people's city, if they feel that there should be districts. That's all on that. There's going to be a sewer tour of the plant on February 27th, and I encourage all commission members and council members, if you haven't seen it, you, you'll find out what, you know, $300 million looks like, and why you're all paying $400, $500 a year on your tax bill, and how much water is just wasted out there in the Puy, Puy ponds that should be used to beautify Antelope Valley, not out there in the desert just sitting there. You'd be amazed, it will blow your mind.
Is that the water, Greg?
I visited Yuma, Arizona, and you learn a lot about where you live when you go to a different place, and $2 a gallon. Why in California do we pay $3 a gallon? Why don't we have a refinery here in Lancaster that pumps it from Bakersfield to here? There's something wrong. Lackey and Runner needs to investigate this, they're letting us down, because their roads are just as good as ours, for, you know, a third less. They also have Yuma Landing, which is my idea for a restaurant bar here on the Boulevard, where they had airplanes and stuff up in the ceiling, a sports bar and everything, and all the old pictures of everybody and all the old things of what happened. I mean, if Yuma has it, then my idea is valid for Lancaster. Maybe at the airshow, you can try to pitch the idea to some investors to see if somebody has some interest in that. The trauma tax has been going on for 12 years, and it's been draining Antelope Valley of $10 million a year, which we only give back $1 million. These, these board members and the cities are both responsible for why this money is going over the hill and we're not being treated fairly. This has to stop this year. We need to do a campaign where every school board, city council, water board signs a letter from Antelope Valley saying, we will not stand for this anymore. We are only getting 10 cents of every dollar we're sending, and we're, that emergency room, people lined up down the hallways, it's not right. We deserve this. 12 years have gone by. Where's the leadership in this city and by the board? You know, those are rich doctors and stuff. There's no excuse for why 12 years of abuse has happened in Antelope Valley.
Jason. Fran?
What?
No, thank you.
Good evening, council, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris. Ladies and gentlemen, I went to the supervisor meeting today to, of course, save my peace there. I brought up, I think, first of all, Antonovich, and I also asked, wished him a happy birthday, belated. I was supposed to go to his birthday party, and I couldn't make it, but I bought the ticket, though. Anyway...
You mean, you got to buy a ticket to go to his birthday party?
Yeah, well, it was, it was, it was, it was a charity, I think, situation.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, now, now, Mayor. Anyway, my, my, my thing was, though, is to bring up the homelessness, okay? And I, I mentioned to him, and I thanked him for helping us with the MetroLink at the end of last year, and I also brought it up to his attention that he also mentioned that he was going to help us with the homelessness, which I read in the paper this morning that the, the facility on, on 60th West and I is going to be opening up at the end of the month. I don't know all the particulars yet. I don't know all the particulars yet, but I asked for more money, because I know we need more money, and I understand that the monies that are being used now are, are monies from the Christian communities. That's what I understand. Vice Mayor Chris, I think this is to you. I was surprised to hear at the, on Christmas Eve, Christmas Day and New Year's, that AVT buses were totally closed. Nobody could use a bus. That's unacceptable. There's a lot of people that need a bus, even if it's not their regular routine, maybe run every hour, every two hour, whatever, but to totally close the bus system? What if somebody needs an emergency run to go on the bus, and they can't afford to pay for a taxi? I was really surprised. Why are you smiling?
Well, the people that work for AVTA also have responsibilities and families at home, so it's always been done that way, and it is, if we could afford it and run it in that manner, then we absolutely would. We can't afford to do it, we have kept the same prices at the same levels as far... as far as letting everybody ride. We have 1.5 million people, seniors, veterans, handicap, people that ride for free. So we've tried to make an overall system that, that works for everybody. So our hope is that on Christmas Day, they're with family or they're with somebody that can take care of them. And we hope that our bus drivers can spend the time with their families also. So it's a matter of affordability. It's a matter of working it out with our union that, to work on it, to pay them triple time to do it. It boils down to money. So.
I understand that. But I mean, even the post office, I worked for the post office for a while and we still had to work. I know we got time and a half or double time, whatever it was. But we, we worked on a skeleton crew because the mail has to go out no matter what, rain or shine or whatever. And the same thing should be for buses. I mean, I just, I was appalled to hear because I don't drive the buses. I, I, thank God, I use access when possible.
Fran, we can absolutely change the world if we raise the prices, if we do everything for the buses. We have not changed the prices for an individual ride for over eight years. Okay? So we just recently made a, a small change. We, the national average is twenty-four percent as far as recovery, fare box recovery. It's twenty-four percent. We're at fourteen percent. So we're trying to make it work as best we can. And again, we can raise the prices that pay for these things that you're asking, but it's that cost to everybody when we do that kind of stuff.
Well, I appreciate it. But this way at least I can, I can answer my people that ask me those questions. I thank you very much for your time.
I used to have a restaurant that operated at those margins for a couple months. David Paul.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, good evening again. Mr. Mayor, I'm here tonight to ask you to keep your promise to everybody, especially me, to put the question of the cameras on the city webpage. You told me that almost three months ago you would do it. It hasn't been done. There's no resolution. Now, I have to tell you, sir, you mentioned the campaign. I am putting together my website, davidpaulformayor.com. I've had it for ten years. I'm redoing it. But, side note, when we were talking about the Blue Angels, you'll see a very nice picture of my family with the commander of the Blue Angels there. And I ask you all to look at it because this is a classic photo because Tom Lackey is in the picture. He's walking by and he's watching us. And it's, it's just pretty interesting. But Mayor, you know, when I did that, when I'm putting these links of the YouTube videos, I, I went back to 2008. And I remember the last time, or it was actually the first time the cameras were turned off. After that, I thought we had an agreement that you wouldn't do that again. Now, I get up here and I try and model for people how to address government, how to participate in government, find the joy that comes from being a part of the community. When you cannot see someone's face, there is no argument you can make that tells me that there is any appropriate reason to do that. It denies me the opportunity to be seen in the community. And I wish you would just stop it. When we had this homeless woman here a few councils ago, it was just sad because her face could have compelled someone to help her. But when you deny her, when you deface her testimony, she doesn't have that opportunity. So I ask you again, please, stop monkeying with the cameras. Turn them back on and let people be seen when they address their government.
You're on, see? There you are.
And Marvin, thank you very much. This is my veteran's bu- bus pass. I went to the AT, AVTA over Christmas and they served a wonderful party for veterans and it was much appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, David.
James Stovall.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and City Council. I've been talking with Senator Runner about using cap and trade funds to fund the senior ride free program again next year. And I will also ask her about funding for Christmas and New Year's so that the buses can run. If we're getting a ton of money from cap and trade, we can use that money to help fund AVTA. And I have talked to Richard Cook over at Senator Runners about getting more money for AVTA. So I wanted to get Marvin that update as well as you, Mayor.
Hey, I told Marvin to have those buses running on Christmas.
We're working on it.
Thank you. Okay. Is that it? Hold on. Thank you. Do we have a closed session? So do we have to say anything or can you say it?
Yes, the council will be going into closed session with regard to items one through eight as listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Sure, Fran, you can say whatever you want.
I just wanted to address all of you and thank you very much for the bicycle you gave to each other. I looked in the paper after, because I nominate a paper. Can they give you a little? Two lines?
Sure, man.
You all good?
Thank you.
Yes, in closed session, the council discussed with legal counsel and gave direction with regard to one potential case on item number two on closed session and with regard to item number eight on the agenda. With regard to item number seven, the city council authorized settlement with the county of Los Angeles. No other reportable action.
Thank you.
By unanimous vote.
We're now adjourning the meeting. The next regular meeting is Tuesday, January 26, 2016 at 5:00 p.m. Carol, I'm coming home.